Good afternoon and welcome to the Policy Committee, CCSD Policy Committee. This is a regular meeting. We are at the Vets Hall and we welcome anybody from the public who's here. It's that. All right. So we have one member not here. Yeah.
James.
James Townsend. And Mr. Townsend is not here. He is excused. And but we do have four, we have four members present. Hey. But I'm so glad you showed up. Yes. All right. So let's, um, do we have any ad hoc subcommittee reports?
Um, I, I, it's not an ad hoc, but the last meeting we discussed my submission for the eight oh four one hundred transfer positions. I am still putting that together to submit to Karen and to to you. I think I sent you some stuff. Um, I, I haven't been involved in the last few weeks with winning my code enforcement with the, uh, with the county one, uh, five hundred and not account setback violations, which has been decided in my favor. So.
Oh, nice. Okay. Great. Anything else from any of the other members? Okay. All right. Well, the chairman's report, I have um, have responses to your questions from um, what you asked last meeting. So the first one was a question about policy twenty one thirty five. And I talked with the Chair of the Finance Committee, Tom Gray, and um, asked him, where are we with the purchasing policy and the reserve policy? And this is his response. And I'm just gonna go ahead and read it so that you have the update. The reserve policy review is moving forward with an ad hoc committee on finance, set to present its report to the committee at the end of October, when the committee will make recommendations to the CCSD Board, CCSD Board. This is pretty straightforward review in which the subcommittee is working with Denise to identify any areas that need updating. The purchasing policy review is another story. Finance has never been assigned to review it as far as I can recall, and I know it has been on the Policy Committee docket for at least a couple of years. I remember that Don was wrestling with it, trying to reconcile rival versions, I think, back in twenty twenty one, when he was Chair of the Policy. You and I might wanna put our heads together to come up with a plan to move that project forward. So um, I will meet with him, um, but I wanted to give you his response to that. Then the second thing was about emergency evacuation plan, that kind of thing. That was from you, right Gordon? Okay. What Karen says is, we have been waiting for Zone Haven to be completed for the evacuation planning. Now that the, now that is ready, we can get back to work on the emergency evacuation maps that were put on hold last year. I worked on the evacuation preparedness maps with our former Fire Chief Hollingsworth, and the drafts are on the Fire Department computer. We have a draft brochure for residents and one for vacation rentals and lodging establishments. We also need to reassess the safe haven areas. The ones on the existing brochures need to be updated or be changed. Tom Gray and I have been working on the alter, all alternate evacuation route and have finally gotten response from the property owners on Harmony Ranch Road, and they are willing to meet with us to discuss it.
Okay.
And now on climate change. Here we go. On climate, on the climate change report, the ad hoc committee gave their final report at last month's R and I meeting, and a copy is attached to my R and I report in next week's agenda package.
Good.
In working with Ray and some talks with Supervisor Gibson, it is recommended that we hire a consultant to help us create a climate adaptation and resiliency resiliency plan and create a climate policy from that. We applied for a grant for a consultant but did not pass second round due to the high demand. However, there is another opportunity coming up in twenty twenty four, and the grant contact person has offered to help us with the grant application. We were told that if we have an actual climate adaptation and resiliency plan in place, similar to the county and some of the other communities we re- researched, that could open up opportunities for grants for things like solar, more EV stations and other projects that could help reduce our carbon footprint and greenhouse gas emissions. In the meantime, the district is very conscious about doing what they can to be environmentally responsible. Karen. Okay?
Yeah, that's, that's certainly appreciated. Uh, can we comment on any of this yet?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I, it's, it's very much appreciated. Um, uh, and we're late later, we're gonna be looking at a, a policy here associated with um, in supporting these, these kinds of things. And I just, you know, I just, right now, there, there is, I think, tremendous opportunity for us to move forward with, uh, you know, with solar. You know, I know you're on.
I agree. Yeah, I agree.
Um, and so, uh, all I can say is, uh, you know, the, the, the sooner the better. I, I don't know, I'll have to talk with Karen and see what they're doing with, uh, this business of sending, uh, people over the hill with, uh, with trucks to go home. Um, I, 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 I do honestly think that if we have a hybrid vehicle sitting in our, um, you know, si- sitting, sitting here, that for any individual that's on call twenty four seven, you know, to be able to take that into wherever they're living and back here is, it's gonna save fuel CO two consumption and all of that. Um, you know, they gotta, they're gonna have to get back to, to the yard to, you know, to, to, you know, to get proper equipment if they, if they even need it.
Yeah.
Um, so I just think that's one more small thing, but a, but not so small a thing, you know, in terms of where it's here in our trucks and, um, um, and of course, uh, fuel costs, which, you know, are probably astronomical given that, you know, given that most of our vehicles.
Seven dollars and something.
Yeah.
Seven dollars.
Oh, oh, no, I mean, I'm just saying, just in terms of, you know, what they, with the fuel costs per month.
Seven dollars a gallon.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it might be. Yeah, I guess it is.
It is.
Here it is. My God. Yeah. Okay. Anyway, that's all I have to say about that. And it's good news that, uh, things are moving forward.
Can I get a, for just, also, just to read on the purchasing thing, did you, did you receive the rules assessment that I sent you?
No.
Okay. I'll try again. Because you may wish to, and you might wanna talk about it with me before you talk to them.
Okay. Thank you. No, I didn't. That's too bad.
Okay. Check my data.
Yeah. And then, and once again, I just wanna remind you all, uh, make sure that you read, um, Matthew McCallhany's, the GM's, um, uh, letters that come out a couple of times a month.
Absolutely.
That will keep you up to date on what's going on with the board. And not only that, but he gives you what's gonna be on the next agendas. So, uh, th- those are really important.
Yeah, they are. They are. Yeah, yeah.
All right. So I think we're open for public comment then.
Matt has his family.
So, okay. Hey, Mr. GM.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, I just want, I just wanted to touch base on what Mr. um, Kiva San and, and Claudia, as far as some of those issues with, with vehicles. So we are looking at, um, an EV fleet program, um, with PG&E to get ahead of kind of that power curve, so to speak, as we are gonna be mandated um, to move towards EV vehicles. So we are looking at a, at a fleet program with PG&E um, that will slowly, you know, start phasing out some of our higher mileage trucks that obviously leave, um, a significant impact on the carbon footprint that we're speaking of. Um, I'm also met with an engineering firm a couple of weeks ago to start discussing solar. Um, how we move forward with that, I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I'm sure that's something that we need to bring to Policy Committee, R and I, you know, as we, as we look towards things like that in terms of, of, of a contract, uh, community input, because there's there's really no way around it. They'll be visible. So where they're placed will be of interest to the community. You know, cuz, you know, if you took up the entire, for instance, right, you take up the entire Vets Hall parking lot and put solar panels there, it's less than attractive. So we gotta find the location, you know, in the right place to, to put those things. Um, and so we're gonna be reaching out to different engineering firms and try to wrap our head around costs, grants, you know, whatever it takes, but that's on our radar, just to keep everybody.
If, if I may, um, I don't know, you know, if, if, as you're moving all, all onto the, uh, to the EV, uh, end of things, and I know that there are new, uh, a commercial EV, uh, equipment coming out all the time, and it's, it's, it's really gonna go fast. Uh, I don't know what your roof situation looks like in your maintenance, uh, area, your maintenance yard, whether there's a, enough roof there to put solar panels and batteries on that building so that when you do need to charge those vehicles, all of that is basically out of sight of, 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 you know, it's basically unused area, an area that will not be viewed. So I'm just, I would just throw that out there. Um, I would also say that, um, while solar panels may or may not appear to be something that people would want to see, I would refer you to, to look at the solar panels that are down at, at Morro Bay High School. You know, solar panels, even if they were old, even if they were over the parking lot in, at here, uh, might not necessarily be a bad thing, uh, considering, uh, you know, they do provide shade, and that might be a plus for the farmer's market. I don't know. Yeah, I'm sure your consultants will go through all that. But, um, I, I am absolutely confident that you will find plenty of surface area for, for solar panels. But what came to mind immediately was uh, placing them on top of your, uh, yard, uh, buildings over there to charge batteries so that you can be, you know, charging your, uh, vehicles, uh, overnight with, uh, uh, with hopefully new level, uh, batteries as opposed to the lithium, which Chodenger just ridiculous. But anyway, I'm glad to hear it. Glad to hear it.
Yeah, that's a good comment. You know, as far as the fossos and resources, that's a little convoluted because it's sitting in the floodplain. We're working with FEMA about a possibility of a relocation. Um, with that relocation, you know, maybe we're working with the Fiskelany Ranch, you know, it is and, you know, how, how that would affect, you know, the, the aesthetics of the ranch. So I have to take that into consideration. Um, another option may be water and wastewater. Um, that's kinda.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's tucked back in there where it's less visible, but might be a big opportunity. But, but yeah, we'll start working with, um, these consulting firms and then we definitely wanna bring it to our committees. So we can get public input on it and things like that. But, but yeah, I think you're spot on. I think there's a lot of opportunity.
Yeah, there, there, there are. And wastewater might be, it might be a good, a, a good place to think about. And eventually, obviously, we're gonna have to relocate that thing that's, you know, you can't, can't leave it there. But, but so, you know, that would be a question of whether you wanna invest, you know, invest in panels to cover that particular area or not. Um, again, that'll be all to your consultants to give you the best locations, and I'm sure they will find them.
Matthew, um, Claudia has a question.
Sure. Um, I just went to Pioneer's last, um, Saturday, and, uh, they were saying that um, solar panels on the sides of buildings are, uh, some of these new ones are more effective than being on the roof. So it opens up other opportunities, uh, for solar. They do have the face south where the solar panels on the roof, the E, um, TVs on the roof are, need to, they can, they can kinda be south. Uh, but the ones on the west, they have to be outside. Um, and then I also, I agree with Ted, uh, on what they're doing now with, um, car parks and putting the solar on top of the car parks. I think those are working pretty well too. And then there was one other thing, and, oh, this is a big one. Um, you know, maybe you could turn that gi- those gigantic lights off that shine right in people's eyes when you're driving down the highway.
Oh.
Um, it would save electricity doing that, and it wouldn't blind people as they drive by. But there's wall pack and then some other, uh, bright, bright white, uh, blue light LED on the back of this building that, that shoots right into, under the highway, into the people across the street that live over there on the, on the hill there. Um, they need, it needs to be redirected, and it also needs to be turned off at night. There's no reason to have that on all night long. Uh, most a crime, that's what you're thinking, happens during the day. And actually, it's harder for people to commit crime that's, that's dark than, than when they have light, so they can see what they're doing. Uh, so, uh, Getify Cambria is Dark Sky Initiative. We've been working, um, for about eight years now, trying to become certified as a dark sky community. So we're very concerned about that. And the, um, what we've presented to the CCSD is that if you have a policy for dimming the lights at night, if you can, uh, you know, street lights and building lights and turning some of them off that don't need to be on unless they're being used. So if you have lights on sensors, that's, it's a lot more energy efficient. So I you know, we're talking about EV stuff. Well, you know, you don't have to have used as much EV if you're not using as much electricity. So, you know, that's my little soapbox.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, goodness, goodness.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
All right. Thank you.
You got it.
Okay. Do you have anybody else?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Right. Well, then I think we can go ahead and go to the consent agenda. Um, has everyone taken a look at the minutes?
Can I clarify something? I just said, I said EV on that PV, one of our checks, not electric vehicles.
Okay.
It's, it's, yeah, that's, that's right.
Uh, the minutes were, I, I wasn't there.
No change. I see, I see no changes. So I, I, I move, we adopt them.
There's a lot of information in that.
Like I said.
I was wondering if you were gonna accomplish all your tasks there. You did very good.
I did. I tried. Thank you, Don.
Yep.
And do we have a second? Second?
Yes.
Okay. All was in favor? Any opposed?
All right. With, no, I have an abstention.
You, you have an abstention. That's true.
Yeah, that's right.
She wasn't here.
Yeah. Three.
Okay. Okay. So we'll then go on to regular business. And, um, so our task was to go through the highlighted policies, um, under the one thousand policy numbers. And we are using this beautiful list that he did for us. Um, and we identified the ones, the, the policies that are on your agenda, and those are the ones we're gonna be talking about today. So the first one, this is Agenda Item four A, and this is Review and Discussion of CCSD Policy Title, Adoption Amendment of Policies, Policy Number One Thousand. And this is actually a CCSD policy, as you'll find later on, some of them are uh, CSDA, but these are in fact, CCSD. And, um, it is here for us to discuss. And if anyone has any suggestions about how we might want to revise it, we are open for discussion.
Uh, I, I read this, uh, through, and quite honestly, uh, I'm not seeing anything here that alarms me. And I, and I know, uh, unless anybody else has something to add, um, I, I, I'm, I'm thinking we should approve it. Um, just straight out. I mean, I, I read it and it seems, you know, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think there's anything, you know, there wasn't anything that jumped out at me. And anybody else have any?
I don't have anything else. It does. It's, it's very broad.
Yeah, sure.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
And that's it. It doesn't say anything about the policy committee, but that may be okay, especially as we're now constituted, because what the committee produces comes through the director, and that's covered in this.
That's exactly right.
I think that the essential thing is where it's the notice issue is what they're really trying to get through that.
Yes.
That nobody just sneaks a policy in.
Right.
Full on.
Yeah, right.
So I think it's good that it says it stands.
Yeah.
You guys okay with it too?
Anybody else? Everybody else?
Okay. Can I have then someone to approve it?
I move we approve of the Policy Number One Thousand that we just, uh, reviewed, uh, is, uh, that was board approved on eight fifteen twenty nineteen, uh, for board consideration to be approved on their latest, uh, available slot.
Hold on a minute.
Okay.
But I have, but I have, I have a question.
Sure.
If this is the CCSD policy, why are we looking at it?
Uh, because, um, there was some question based on this form that was part of our packet last year, last month. Um, and it said that, well, that was from last.
Oh, yeah. You think that's from, is that the one you're?
I think so.
I didn't see this. I didn't even open up the book until just now. This, this is what you're talking about.
Yeah, this was, um, the name of it is Adoption Amendment of Policies, and it was approved on eight fifteen nineteen, as, um, Ted said, uh, but you'll see a little bit later on down under Policy Ten Fifty Six. It's kind of the same thing, though.
This is, no, no, that's.
And this is, this is an agenda. Yeah. I, that's all I have.
So, yeah, so basically.
Was it an email to us or something?
Yeah, this one's. About a month ago.
It's in the August twenty fourth of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
Right here.
Do you have an extra one?
Yeah.
Here's four. No, that's four.
Yeah, that's it. That's it.
August twenty four. Yeah, here it is.
Well, I don't think we need to do anything.
That's what it is, is we're saying.
So they're supposed, that's fine.
There's supposed to be a question. What is the question?
The question, the question is, this is the current, um, policy, and do we have any recommendations for evidence?
Of comments. So there's no question from the CCSD about them. But we're just do, I wasn't at the meeting last week, my last time. So I have no idea. See, I just saw a list of all these policies you're going over. So you, last meeting, you decided that you would go over all these policies.
Yeah, last meeting, we looked at that form that I just handed you. Oh, you have it now.
Right.
And I made a, a graph, which I'm gonna do in the next segment.
Okay.
Um, I made a graph. In fact, I'll give you one.
So we're just starting like with number one.
We're, we're starting.
Okay, thank you.
Now I got. We're moving. We're starting with the thousands.
Yeah, and we're just gonna go through all of the policies that need attention. Okay. We're not gonna go through all of the policies that have been approved by the board.
Right.
Um, unless one of you says to me, I wanna bring this policy back.
Well, that's why I wonder why we're doing this one, because there's no action that needs to be taken on that.
The reason we did, yeah, the reason we did that was because Policy Ten Fifty Six uh-huh, is exactly the same thing.
And, and if, and if I may.
Yes.
Ah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, we're looking at twenty nineteen approvals.
Right.
We're coming on to twenty twenty four.
Right.
So I don't know, I, I can't remember off the top of my head how often the board is supposed to review its policies. But it would seem to me that if we go through here and update the, the, the reviews of these policies,
Yeah.
then it won't be eight fifteen twenty nineteen, it'll be ten one twenty three.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that, it, it, so what we're telling people is that we have in fact looked at these and we have in fact reestablished them as current policy.
Right.
So I think that's a good thing.
And the board approved, we need to vote on this.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. And I made a motion.
Before we do.
I, I see.
Uh, just sort of a question to keep the potential deal with later on.
Yes. Yes.
So the issue here is, uh, the motion to, well, we can't really see, the board is already adopted, but all they wanna tell the board is, uh, this, we're in discussion.
Yeah, we just don't, we, we don't think it needs.
We see no need to.
Yeah, and, and, and we just encourage the board to, to look at it and, and re-adopt it.
But that's different though. See, now you're going too far. I mean, not too far, but further.
Yeah.
So are you saying that you, not only do we say that this needs no change, but we also want the board to look at it?
Correct. To, to put their stamp of approval on it.
You have to ask if I wanna continue my second.
Yeah, why don't you?
Um.
I don't, we're already approved it.
Do we, do we need to do this? Maybe we don't even need to.
No, but it will be, but it will be in our minutes, which is a public document that says we reviewed it, and we don't think it needs to be changed.
That's fine. Oh, okay. That's fine. That's, that, I'll reverse your motion. Yeah, 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 yeah. That's fine. It's fine.
It's a website.
I don't, I don't care as long as the, you know, the, that, that we update that, approve, board approved, nine eight fifteen. Um, and you could say, Policy Committee reviewed.
I should, yeah.
Sorry.
And let me just say one more thing. This was a real question for this committee. How do we suggest, how do we get the board to take a look at a policy? And so I put it in here so that we'd be really clear about what, what we need to do to bring new policies to them. Okay?
Correct, yeah.
So I kind.
It's over just, just like, uh, or better, I mean, just to, I did, I feel like you're, you don't like.
So, uh, we have a motion and we have a second. And the motion is, it's fine.
Basically.
Yes. Okay, so all those, all those, um, who agree? Okay. Any opposed?
No.
No. Okay. Great. Uh, uh, just let me say something in the interim. Um, we're just really giving ourselves established to try to take a look at what is the role of this committee. And we, we've talked about, and I think if you take a look, um, Claudia, if you take a look at that list, this answers the questions that you asked at our very first meeting. Like, where is this? Where are these supposed to be and what has happened? So I love, I love that list. Um, so that's what we're doing.
Yep. Yep, that's what happened a long time ago.
It did. And so that's what we're doing, and we're gonna do this very systematically.
Welcome, welcome, welcome.
All right. Let's go then to, um, Agenda Item four B, which is Review and Discussion of CCSD Policy Ten Forty Five, Legal Counsel and Auditor. And it, it's a really good one. I didn't, I didn't, I, I didn't have one edit, and that is, um, where it says in the, on the second to the, or third to the last line, it says the Chief Financial Officer slash General Manager. That's not her title anymore. So I think that is.
You're, you're.
It's down here.
It's, there is a CSDA policy.
Right.
So if we do forward this to the board, then yeah.
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 And you, your proposal is to change that to.
What's her administrative department?
Administrative department, yeah, sure. Okay, let me just wrap it in.
That's who, what do we change into administrative department?
By Chief Financial Officer. Yeah, let's go ahead and discuss this because, and let me give you just a little bit of guidance. This is a CSDA policy, which some of the policies in our handbook, in CCSD's handbook, are CSDA policies. I think the board needs to adopt them to, um, to actually make them part of our handbook.
Oh, okay.
So that's the process that we're going through with this policy right now.
Absolutely. You're the promoter. Absolutely.
Mick, would you repeat again what? So the General Manager is not the General Manager. He's
No, the.
Not the Chief Financial Officer, but he's something else.
No, the Chief Financial Officer is the Administrative Department Manager.
Right.
Yeah, other things. Paulie should read the Administrative Department Manager and General Manager while installing.
Yeah, okay.
And they should be in lowercase.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's her title.
No, that's the type, yeah, Administrative.
Well, not when you make it into a sentence. Well, but.
Well, no, the Administrative Department Manager slash General Manager. No, that's fine. Those are tight.
Here's a question.
Yes.
Uh, we don't, um, the real, the essence of this is that, and, and I, I'm, I'm not sure that this particular section is necessary because we are required to have an audit, but not by our policy, but it's, I mean, as I recall, mainly, uh, we generally, Denise engages an auditor each year, right?
Yeah.
And so it's much of what's in here, and, and the board does not even, other than approve the auditor, a contract, the board itself doesn't actually engage the auditor. I'm, I'm kind of, this may not describe the way it works.
And so the board approves hiring the auditor's contract, then the Administrative Department Manager works with the auditor.
So in your eye, it may not ask you a question.
Sure. Sure, which, um, which sentence are you trying?
Well, I'm just looking at the whole thing, so I, what I'm wondering is, does this describe the way we do it now?
Section one zero four five point three.
Point three, yes.
Ten forty five, right, three, two, right, does, or is this adding?
So the first sentence is definitely.
It is correct. Right.
Yeah, that is correct.
That does describe what we do, okay, then, then forget what I was about to say. I have one other thing, which is more of a, uh, two grammatical issues.
Okay.
There first, there's a missing preposition, uh, one, uh, ten forty five point two, one, two, three, four lines down. I believe that there should be an of, implementation of legislative policies.
Yeah, that's right, should say of, yeah, you're right.
Implementation of.
Yeah.
No.
For formulation and implu- impl- implementation, legislative.
Yeah, legal assistance necessary for formulation and implementation. So should it be two, two ofs?
Be to implementation of legislative policies and projects. On the next sentence down. I'm just wondering, uh, let me read it to you, and then, I'm thinking. You know, okay, I'll just have to, oh god, it's a long sentence.
Yeah.
Oh dear, I'm gonna jump in the middle, uh, if you just drop down a line, negotiations and similar proceedings, okay, colon, ah, here we are. And to keep the board and district staff apprised of court rulings and legislation affecting the legal, I believe this should be interests of the district.
Sure.
Yeah, I put it as on there, that's fine, cause, yeah. Yeah, that should be it, yeah, that's, that's.
Okay, so you have.
Yeah, very good.
Okay.
Oh, I have one more.
Yeah.
Get them, this, and again, I, uh, this goes more endeavor, you'll probably have a better feeling for this. We're saying that the legal counsel shall present and report on all legal issues. And there, it's just too much in the sense, I think, um, when you're in closed session. Does Tim always present everything?
He doesn't present it, he reports on it.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm thinking that says, maybe it should be legal counsel shall simply report on all legal issues in closed session items before the board.
Well, he does present the items before we adjourn to closed sessions.
I just was kinda making sure that that's in fact.
He usually presents it and then the board asks for public.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay.
So we're cool there.
Yeah, you could do it.
But I think it's a really good policy to have. And to have it be part of our handbook, is that, do y'all agree with that or not?
Yeah, I mean, you could, if, if, if you wanted to just put a slash, present slash, report. I mean, if, if he's either presenting and or reporting at a particular.
Well, he does both.
Well, then if he does both, then it's and, present and report, so that is.
Just wanna get clarity.
Yeah, and then it's correct.
Question is sort of what he reports.
Correct, did you just find any other?
Yeah.
What they did.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, we're trying to approve it the next month.
My wife would have.
Somebody had any input because she didn't know about it. But then he goes back as well, he said, we're gonna discuss this item.
It will be on the agenda if actually, if it's something for the public to make, um, to make comment on, excuse you. Bless you, it'll, it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting. It, it, and I would say also that it would be in Matthew's letter, if it's gonna be on the agenda.
Well, we probably get more from Matthew's letter than we do.
That's true.
That's, I'm trying to relate.
Yeah.
When you go into closed session. That's something that's closed.
Yeah.
That means it's not very transparent as to what depth. Things of, you know, H R and whatever things that are obviously kept private, but sometimes. Things that could be brought up during the closed session that is evaluated by the staff and it's presented. In the meeting, but they didn't tell you what they chose, for example, when was the, the vehicle choice? In the meeting, they said this was our only option, but later we questioned it, no, we went to two other Ford dealers. But they didn't look at the E V choice or, what I'm saying? And the people might wanna go that way, it was yes. And staff is assuming that it may be a cheaper vehicle, it's longer lead time to go E V and. But we don't have that feedback until this upper option by the board. So that's what I'm just saying is.
No, I, I understand, yeah.
I have a question.
Sure.
But, um, you're saying that when they decided to buy a new truck, they did it in closed session?
No.
Oh.
No, they said that they did not have any choice to go to one bidder. Then they backed up and said they went to two others, one was no bid and the other was higher price.
Yeah, because the board said, timeout. Was there, was there any, any other people, you know, was there an R F P and did you go out to different vendors? And, um, we, well, I'm gonna just say this. I've said to, to, um, Matthew, you need to, you need to put that you did that. Because, yeah, and so then last board meeting, he did.
So, my comment was, well, you know, it's our money they're spending, so it should be more transparent.
Well, the, the actual purchase of the vehicle is. The board, I mean, the public has a chance to say things at that point.
Yeah.
Not much.
Well, we didn't, that wasn't in, that wasn't in, in closed session.
No. No, that's correct.
Yeah.
Mentioned.
Yeah.
That was the question I had, it's what we went to.
Yeah.
And the thought was first, it was, we had only one bidder.
Yeah.
But my question was, what happened to, um, the, uh, Ram vehicles?
Yeah.
Other loans, we just went to Ford, and Ford is gonna only have Fords.
Yeah.
And therefore, we didn't get it through cross-section of what potential we had that maybe more economical? Or we not be, I don't know.
Well, and I will tell you that that has gotten a lot better.
No, I understand, this is what we're asking about closed session, right?
No, because it wasn't in.
We're talking about Tim's report, what's in closed?
But it wasn't in close, we, we didn't discuss that in closed session. A purchase of a vehicle is not in, in closed session, no.
I don't, the other, the other thing that I've noticed is that sometimes they put things on the agenda that say closed session, but it doesn't say what the closed session is.
It says, it's, it says what the law says. Whether, if it's like an employee evaluation or something like that, or if it's about, um, possible litigation.
Well, as I say, possible litigation, what's that mean? Possible litigation, they should, they can't tell you what it is, you know?
No.
Because it, it becomes very crucial.
Not know who it is, I'm just saying what it is. Litigation against the C C S B, litigation against employee, litigation against, you know, who.
You don't know about it, it just.
It's, it's not necessarily about, well, once somebody has filed a lawsuit, that's public information. So this is contemplating what the facts of the case are. So that we can then make a decision about what we're gonna do next. Okay, so, for instance, at the last board meeting, you all saw that we directed our attorney. To get a, get a, um, a, an estimate, uh, an appraisal. For a piece of property where we have a, um, um, well. Right? School, it's cool, okay, so. In order to make those decisions, we have to have a lot of information, that's back information. That could be very destructive for the C C S D and for others in the, in the, um, in the community. So that discussion is behind closed doors, but the actual decision is always made in front of the public. Okay?
But you could have said that it had something to do with a, with a pump. You couldn't either say what it was about?
No.
Interesting.
Well, based on, um, the Brown Act.
Right, well, yeah, it's any, it's like in a real estate negotiation or any kind of legal thing, you, you, where you're in, in possible opposition.
Yeah.
You do not necessarily want, and it's not in the public's best interest necessarily, to let the opposing parties know what your plan is.
Right.
It's that sort of.
So you don't, you don't want them to even know what you're talking about.
You don't even want them to know that you're thinking about suing them.
Right, yeah. So there you go, there you have it, but, but it is, and, and I understand the concern, Lauren, I absolutely. As I was part of public before I was in closed session, and, and, and it can be frustrating. Um, but, um, just to, just to let you know that any decisions that are made are, no matter what, are made.
I agree with that.
In.
Some of the decisions I don't agree with.
Well, that's okay.
Well, my big one was obviously the, uh, P S O plan.
Yeah.
Have discussed it in the morning, then have the guy sign the signature in the meeting.
I'm not gonna speak on things.
Now Matt has a different perspective.
Yeah.
Land things out, I guess, good.
Yeah, it is good.
Pick your thing.
Yes, yes, Matthew.
No, I just wanted to follow up on what Mr. Howell was saying and, and what Claudia was saying, um. You know, those closed sessions, you know, when we take action, it's brought. It's the advice of council and the board who come together on sensitive legal matters that kinda have to, they kinda have that client attorney privilege. Then when we get that information, we have those conversations, if we're gonna take action, it's then brought before the public in open session. So everybody's fully aware, but those closed session items, like, like has been discussed, they're, they're sensitive, they're legal in nature, they're. Subject the district to risk and letting out any information about those initial discussions creates. Larger global problems, and so.
Exposure that you don't want.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, and so we try to put, you know, according to the Brown Act, Tim's very good at highlighting, you know. Uh, you know, personnel, uh, G, G M evaluation performance, you know, and we. That's a global term and we go into closed session and have conversations about it, and then it'll come before the public in open session, so. It's not necessarily that we're trying to be less transparent, it's just whatever opens up the district to any. You know, legal matters, which can be very, very expensive, we're doing that in closed session to keep it somewhat confidential. Decision is made, if we're gonna take action, those actions will be brought in the public forum and you will hear everything about it, so.
Nice, I asked you a quick question, um, so when it came to the suing this, the school district. Had that already been in closed session before you put it on the agenda?
Nobody has said anything about suing the school district.
This is in the agenda, the last, last agenda.
No, it's not, it wasn't, just to do an appraisal.
Oh, I didn't read it that way.
And that's, and that's part of the problem, right? Like, we, we don't wanna put out information like that, and, and, you know, even, even that statement, not, and I'm not. Blaming you, uh, just the misconception that we're suing the school district isn't, wasn't even. A part of the discussion, so that, that's why we try to only bring things before the public that we've. That we're planning on doing, and the, and the last one was to obtain an appraisal.
Cause one of the things is, is that one of the ways we could, um, do things is we could purchase it, but we need to know how much it's worth.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so, so go ahead, did you have something else?
No, no, I just said, I just said thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table, and that motion was. No, we don't.
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
But I, I'll be happy to make one.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I move that we approve of, uh, policy, uh, ten forty five legal counsel. And, and auditor, uh, as, um, written in, uh, the, um. C S D A, uh, sample manual with the edits, uh, suggested by member Howell. To, uh, be presented to either the board or to, uh.
Yeah.
To be presented to the board. That's right.
Have a second? Okay. All right, all those in favor? Four eyes?
The edits are.
Go ahead.
To, uh, insert, uh, between implementation and legislative policies on this fourth sentence. Of ten forty five point two. And then in the sixth sentence to change the singular interests where it says legal interest to legal interests of the district. And then, uh, let's see, there is one.
The title at the bottom.
And down at the bottom.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, the title, so it's to be, uh, Administrative Department Head.
Manager.
Administrative Department.
Manager.
Manager. And it's sure, and, and, and general manager, is that right?
Okay, correct.
So then what, oh, and so then, yeah, so then what will happen is, um. I will, um, give this to Haley and we'll make it to.
Awesome.
Awesome. Okay, let's go then to agenda item four C.
Ten fifty.
This is the review and discussion of C C S D policy, oh, C S D A policy ten fifty. Overview of the General Manager's role.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, uh.
Okay, so, uh, yes, let's talk about this.
Okay, so first of all, um, I, I, I think that this is a pretty generic. If you will, uh, description of the General Manager's role. I don't have any problem with this list, my question is, is it congruent with the, yeah. You know, the human resources, uh, description of the General Manager's. Responsibilities, as long as this is congruent with the human, human relations job description. Then I believe we should adopt it, if it is not congruent, or there are areas that are missing, or areas here that create conflict. Then we should probably set this aside and do a side by side review with that.
I, I'm not sure we have a job description for the G M, it's an employment, okay.
So you do, all right.
So, does that make sense, Haley, to look at, to look at them side by side to make sure that, you know, that, that if we adopt this. Overview of the General Manager's role that is congruent with the, the current job description?
Well, I, I personally don't think there should be a policy on the overview of the General Manager's role, because that's already defined in his position description.
Okay, well.
Yeah, and the board actually reviewed and approved that, I believe, in February of this year, so it is current.
Okay.
And it's posted on the website under his employment agreement.
Okay, well, that, that's, that's, that's perfectly fine, and, and what that means is that policy number ten fifty. Is basically outlined in the existing description. If it, if it even is a policy, I mean, maybe, maybe it's not even a policy, maybe, maybe it just, I don't know. So that's, that's my question.
I have some thoughts.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, well, I, it is true that we do have a job description, I think that this operates at a somewhat higher level. And it may be that it, it, and if, if. Subsequent boards might find it useful to have this higher level as they're tweaking the, uh, job description. But at, for, if you'll just bear with me for a minute, I think that ten fifty point two, except for one. One, one important sentence is totally redundant and should, should just be, uh. Left off because everything in there is covered in either the first paragraph or the third paragraph, one exception. And this is why I think maybe this should be addressed, I mean, maybe not today, but maybe we should take the job description and look at it. Because I, I do think there are areas which are in fact policy areas, which are not in the description, and I'll give you an example. Uh, which one is it? Let's see. Uh, yeah, uh, this issue of representing the board before internal, external organizations.
Which one is it?
Uh, that's the, under the ten fifty point two. Attending it, so if, aside with the grammatical problem, you know, which I'll change, I'm gonna read it to you, so instead of attendant, participate, it would be attending and participating. District Board Readings, preparing and presenting reports as necessary. Now, this is important because the board has never discussed this. And representing the board before external organizations, including other agencies. and representing the board before external organizations, including other agencies, government, and, which are entities, business and community groups. Now, the only reason that I think that this area may be a policy area that the board has not fully dealt with, is that in a previous general manager, the general manager said, I want to be the face of the district, those are his words. And the board said, no, you may not, because what he was doing was actually going around and sabotaging certain things. So there is some gulf there as to what policy, I mean, what is the general manager's role in the relations between the board and the public? And I think it's dealt with, if you look at the last sentence in the first paragraph, ten fifty point one, general manager plans, organizes, directs, coordinates, and evaluates, evaluates all district operations, programs, and resources in accordance with, and I want to assert, the board's short and long. Policies, statements, and directives. In other words, that's kind of a policy, it doesn't tell the general manager what he should be doing, but draws kind of a, uh, you know, I'll finish my little speech, shut up.
No, that's.
These are good things, these are good things.
That could be useful, uh, after quote that, while we're on that first paragraph, I would simply remove the, the last from the board, so it's.
Yeah, right, that's.
The board's short and long lanes, old policies and directives. Uh, and then what I would do in the second paragraph is just, uh, change it slightly and, and, and maybe somewhere find some home for that, uh, D sense, but I don't think the other ones, I think they're totally covered in the, in the first paragraph. And supervising facilities, or, you know, it's all there, and that's where we're gonna want to tell.
Yeah, I just, I, I just personally don't think that we should have two different documents outlining the general manager.
No, it should be, I'm saying it should be very broad, not too specific, but maybe what.
That's why he wants.
Or maybe it should be, maybe the existing job description should be adjusted. In other words, cause I don't know that the board doesn't really have a policy. We, we, in other words, the board has had general managers where they really did need to control what they were doing, and then we had some this one, which is excellent, and it's not an issue, but it doesn't mean it will become an issue in the future.
Maybe Matthew does.
Yeah, he might have something on that. But before we, before we.
Before we, before we go to the public.
Before we do that, which is, I do think that ten fifty point three, which is not actually part of the general manager's description per se, but does discuss the relation between the board and the general manager, and I suggest that because there, this is an incredibly important issue, and even though it's in the board bylaws, it's often ignored. And I think it might not be a bad idea to include that as a policy statement as well.
Um, no, I'm saying like.
And then, uh, you, earlier you said, you put it out there redundancy, and I was wondering, I saw, where is this, in the first paragraph, uh, direction of the board of directors, and then, and then the first sentence in fifty, uh, ten fifty point three, it says at the pleasure of the board, and it keeps repeating. So I don't think you need to repeat it, but, uh, we just leave it kind of.
Where, which part?
It, it's the direction of the board, and then it talks about, um, then, then.
Where is this?
The fir-, the first sentence in ten fifty point three, it says, and district ministers of the pleasure of the board, but it always said under the direction of the board, so you go either direction of the board, or your pleasure of the board, or.
Well, to show that probably that they get tired of firing.
Yeah, right, yeah, right, that establishes, that establishes.
Direction of pleasure, or is that two different things?
Those are totally different.
Yep.
Uh, as a staff member, I do not like having to refer to two different documents that state two different similar things. So members of the board will refrain from making requests directly to district employees, that is outlined in the board bylaws, that they're not supposed to be contacting staff members directly. So I would hate to see the board bylaws having information about that, and then a policy having information about that. And then also, at the very end, it states that as members of the public, directors may request nonconfidential factual information from, regarding district operations from district employees. If requesting public records, directors must follow the public records policy. As a staff member, we just provide directors with the information they're requesting, as long as it's a public record, the director should not have to submit a public records request to receive district records.
Well, I guess that would be a question. I mean, that's, that is a practice way.
Yeah.
Should it be, I don't know.
That would create a lot of work for me as.
Let's see.
Create.
Oh, good lord.
Public records request, send it out to staff and get that information, we can just be doing it internally anyway.
I see. So Haley, where the recommended this staff sentence on the.
We just need to make sure that there's not the same information in two different documents, but Matthew, you go ahead.
Well, how about the committee first, did you have any comment, Gordon?
Well, I was creating with Tom, basically, there's a, there was a confusion somewhat in my mind of, of how general manager deals with the staff, and, uh, board members are not able to get feedback directly from the staff member. I don't think that should be appropriate, because how do you get feedback, unless you go through the manager, which depends on how good a manager is, that can be good. But if we get a manager that doesn't work as well, then we're saying, well, how are we gonna get information? We're saying we can't. And it does say refrains from, so it does say, not ironclad, you shall not. So I'm trying to clarify that, cause that's the impression I've always gotten, when we're trying to find information about a topic or whatever, how good is this working out, or any feedback on who's doing a, a good job until you wind up saying, well, he got fired a few days ago or whatever. And you say, well, what happened? Well, we don't have any feedback.
Well, the public would not be able to have that information anyway.
Yeah.
Because that's personnel information, and that is protected.
Well, this is about the CCSD members.
I know, but you're, I thought you were asking it from you.
No, board members shall refrain. It says, we shall will refrain.
Where?
Well, three lines up to the bottom, four lines.
Director.
The members of the board will refrain.
So will refrain from making requests directly to. To undertake analyses or perform work inside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, that's different, it's specific to that, but let me, can I, can I, oh, what?
I just said one little thing, but, um, assistant directors must follow the district, the district goes for public records policy. Um, isn't that a, a state or a federal policy that's not district's policy, it's a, it's a government policy that you have to, that you have to, um, if somebody makes a public records, uh, request, you have to give that to them, it's not up to the district, it's up to the.
Yeah, but it's saying that the directors must follow that policy, so if, if Deborah contacted me and said, can you send me this document, she would have to submit a public records request? I don't think that's.
Oh, I see, they're saying that she shouldn't have to.
Right, correct.
That was the public will need to submit, not us, but not our director, okay, right, it's not clear.
Just let me make a couple of statements, and one is, I, I don't think that this document is complete.
No.
And it, it needs to say that the, that the general manager needs to adhere to operating principles and pri-, and policies, that he is, he or she is in charge of, or it make, does negotiations in support of the board. And then, uh, he communicates, he or she communicates with the public on a regular basis, so there's that extra stuff. So my thought, and, and let's just go ahead and listen to what Matthew has to say.
Yeah, sure, um, so I, I don't have the, uh, CSDA policy that you're looking at on hand. Um, I, I like the conversation, I think that, you know, some of it is touching on, you know, how do, as the general manager, I have to shield slash protect the operation sides of the house, so they can remain efficient and do the work, and, and, not that it's a bad thing, but our community is very involved in almost everything. And so, w- w- letting me run interference or be the person that's in between the public, the directors and staff, allows them to remain efficient and, and do their work. Now, in the past, and I, and I, I think I understand what, what Gordon is saying, is that we have had employees in the past that were not very cooperative, and, and, and when that information is being requested, um, the general manager isn't facilitating that, and so that's my role. And so as, as we've kind of turned the corner and kind of changed our philosophy on transparency, whatever you wanna call it, you know, through the letters to the community, you know, I don't wanna take credit for all that, because ninety percent of the information that I get is because I'm working closely with our staff members. I'm working closely with the utilities managers, facility resources, with Haley, with Denise, and they're providing me that information, so we can get that out there in the public. So, um, I, I like the fact that the directors can run that information through me, and I can connect with staff, because there's a lot of pressure when you have a director tap you on the shoulder and ask for documentation, and, and our um, employees at, at the staff level are very respective of those positions, so they will drop everything that they're doing to, to please the board, even though that they're MCE, and they're, you know, I should be the one panicking when they, when the board asks me for things, you know, I don't like staff panicking. And so, um, I like that delineation there, and I think that we're turning the corner in, in, in the fact that anyone can ask me for anything almost at any time, and we'll facilitate it in a short amount of time.
Right, right.
So, and that separates.
So.
Ken, you have a question?
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at the, at the, the overall picture here, I mean, I think Don is, is, is saying that we've got a, uh, a higher level policy going on here, and then I'm looking at a, a job description, and I'm thinking about what Haley has, has, uh, suggested here in terms of, you know, making life difficult, so the question is, uh, do, are we able to create a policy that covers all the bases that, uh, you know, that the GM has just mentioned, um, and addresses Haley's concerns, uh, and, and includes a, 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 how can I say, a more succinct and, and, um, clear, uh, policy that, that, you know, that not only, that really does do more maybe than overview of the general manager's role, but it really sort of is, it is a, a definition of the manager's role, I don't know, I'm just, I'm, I'm brainstorming here, because it, between, you know, cause I'm, I'm looking at that job description that was up there, and that was pretty brief. Um, so, yeah, I don't know if there's anything more.
It's just four pages.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so. I, I really, I really think, I, I really think this requires maybe even some, some more deeper consideration wi- with, with this, and it could be, it, this, this could probably be almost a whole meeting. You know, um, I don't know that we'll be able to resolve this issue today.
I, I agree, and, um, did we get everything from you, Matt, that we needed to hear?
Yeah, I was just trying to separate, you know, how I can run interference for staff, and then, and then I do, I work at, I'm beholden to the board, both in terms of at their pleasure and at their direction, and so
Mm-hmm.
I, my goal is to have them as pleased as possible, so I can stick around, and the other way to make them pleased is to follow their direction, so, you know, and I, and I try to tie in with them closely, and, you know, through various committee meetings like this, and our boardwalks. Um, their direction is clear and, and concise, and then, and that's, those are my marching orders, so to speak, and so, you know, however that's framed in a policy and or my job description, I, I'm open for.
Yeah.
So I have a question, would you like to just continue this and discuss it further when we have the job description as part of the packet?
I think it'd be a very good idea, so, yeah.
You wanna do that?
I really don't see it's a better arrangement.
Okay.
I, I do.
My name was on this policy years ago.
Okay.
Never came to light.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got it.
I got that.
Yes. I don't want that to happen. Yeah, okay.
How far we were going with this.
So can we agree to put this on a future agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We'll put it on a future agenda, and we'll have all the documents that you are.
Yeah, so we know. And, and it will be absolutely imperative when we have that discussion, that we have our current GM, and certainly Haley here to make sure that, you know, that we're not making things gooey.
Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed, really, can we have just one, one, should we look at that first page of the description again?
Yeah.
Cause I did notice, and, and this is why, yeah, I think Deborah's point is well taken, and we really do need to discuss this in greater detail, so go down to the first, that one, right?
So this is just about.
Oh, that's the.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, yeah, look at that second sentence there.
I can't read it.
Take off my glasses.
Provides.
Policy guides to the board. I think that is where we need to start, because we look at it the other way, the board provides policy guides to, so, but it's probably something other than what it says, and, and that could be a source of considerable misunderstandings.
I mean.
So, yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah, we need to talk more about it.
Yeah. No.
Do we need a motion?
Oh, it's the table.
To, to table it?
Yeah, my, 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 my motion is that, uh, yeah, uh, I make the motion that we uh, table our discussion on policy number ten fifty overview of the general manager's role, uh, to a future date, um, to, to consider the, um, actual job description, uh, listed in human relations to compare for, um.
You don't need to go on.
Yeah, just to, just to compare. Just, yeah, just, yeah, just, yeah.
So it doesn't die, cause people indefinitely, it's a code.
Yeah.
Uh, to a future date determined by, uh, the committee chair.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, sure, let's do it, I mean, we, cause we gotta.
Next meeting?
If, if we're, if we're gonna go through the thousands.
To the next meeting.
Right, okay, we're gonna go through the thousands, we need to.
So that's in November, so it's under second.
Yeah.
Okay, two dot ten, it goes under second.
Yes.
To.
Listen, you're agreeing with second, we have confirmation.
I know, I don't know if I can do that.
Oh.
I think that was on the agenda too.
Yeah, that was on the agenda last time, we, we, we agreed to extend to November second.
It's a Thursday, it's the same, same bad times, same bad place, different bad day.
I have a doctor's appointment at one thirty, um, I don't know if we can talk about it later, I just.
Yeah, yeah, and well, just keep in touch with me and let me know.
Okay, that was a motion by ten.
Yeah, and second, two, two second?
One second after me.
Second, or Gordon?
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Do we have to, do we have to do that?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, you have to vote.
Yeah, okay.
Is it unanimous?
It is.
It's unanimous, okay, so where's yours?
All right.
Yep. All right.
Let's go on to agenda item.
Ten fifty five.
Forty.
Forty.
This is review and discussion of CSDA policy ten fifty five legislative advocacy policy. Oh, this is new, so again, this is a CSDA policy, and, um, but it is part of our handbook. Um, so our, I think our purview is, um, number one, is this something that we want to, um, edit? Do we wanna change, and do we wanna send to the board to approve as an actual CCSD policy?
I'm prepared to talk, but I don't necessarily.
You go, you go right ahead.
Yeah, I've been, I've been talking a lot.
Uh, I've reviewed this fairly.
Yes.
And I think we should not recommend this, I, I see this, I mean, in a different world, and, and with a somewhat different, um, CSD, remember this is, we're all special districts, I think that our district, closest we have come to legislative advocacy was, uh, there were two situations, one was when we, the lobbyists, who would help us trying to get them, you know, okay, and that was done, and we, and, and the board had no policies in that regard. And then the other one, my mind just went blank suddenly, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Uh, but what I do see is that this could, right now, the board has so much on its plate that even the thought of trying to, because what this requires, if you follow it through, is you need to, and they will actually need to establish these.
Advocacy priorities that we have none.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm afraid that, I feel and see that this kind of a discussion with this, in this community, with this board, will have nothing but bad business.
And I very much agree with you, how about for instance, the committee?
Yeah.
I have problems with it too.
Yeah.
So, why don't you make a motion, Don?
Motion to.
Okay.
I'm motion, yeah, I'm motion.
We might have.
Oh, we have, we also got us, wait.
Any more discussion?
More discussion, yeah, we don't.
No, we don't have any public here today.
Well, we have to call.
Nobody else.
We have to call. We have to call.
Put it in the minutes though.
There's no other comment.
So.
So any other?
P C.
I mean, I agree. I think we don't need it. So what we have to do, if it's on this list, but it's never been approved by the board.
There were three people that that had addressed this, so.
Yeah, but it had it wasn't sent to us by the board. I think the policy committee just decided that we wanted to take a look at it.
Um.
Yeah, we just.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were we were reviewing. We're reviewing for consistency with the C S D A manual. And in this case, this is this is this is a policy that we do not believe. Um is relevant to our to our uh district.
Yeah. So how do you get something out of the policy handbook? It's not hasn't been approved, so it's really not in there.
It shouldn't even be there.
It's not there.
No, it's not there, okay.
Also, uh do we need a motion to not rec? Shall I move? I move to not recommend this policy ten fifty five. Uh to to the C C S D board.
Yeah.
I could go farther.
Make it a decision.
That's good.
If that does it, then that does it, and I second.
Okay.
Okay, motion.
All those. All those in paper?
Certification.
Yes.
For for zero?
I don't know.
No.
Oh, we have.
Yeah, we're still discussing.
Oh, sorry, whoops.
I'm not quite sure what we're doing. You say there is no policy in the manual at the moment.
No.
Right.
And you're thinking we shouldn't have this policy in the manual.
Right.
That's correct.
And you're thinking then because.
It's because it doesn't really pertain to C C S D. We don't do legislative ad advocacy.
Yeah, it's not a part.
The entity that does legislative advocacy for us is C S D A.
Well, I heard somebody mentioned that we had a accuracy there for a couple of years or paying them so much. And that's why I'm asking why would it happen here?
Well, at at that point, it was whether or not to hire a lobbyist.
They did.
Right, yes.
He was in Bay Harbor.
Yeah, and how long ago?
I was trying to get a piece of.
It was a long. Then don't we need a policy to say that we don't hire lobbyists?
Right.
No.
No, no, we can.
No, if you do hire a lobbyist and you don't, you need a policy about that?
No.
No.
If you want to hire a lobbyist, then you just go through the G M and the board. And then they can make a decision about that.
Yeah, because the G M would be the.
And then and then the contract would outline what that person would do.
Yeah, and then and the G M would be the point person. Uh to report to the board.
Yeah.
So who decided to hire the last?
I have no idea.
God, I just.
That's a.
Yeah, that that was. For the manager doing what he wanted to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't think the public was behind that.
Well, and so now that that's a decision to hire a lobbyist has to go to the board.
Well, it didn't say that anyplace.
Well, if you have a contract.
I don't know, that's all I ask.
Um.
Because it had all these ramifications of details here.
Uh that maybe we should have a policy that just says that um if if any event that. A lobbyist is needed, that it will go through the board, you know, or just how that would happen. We can have no policy about it and then. It would be like the same thing, we did that.
It's a fact. You would go through the board. It's the fact board has to approve the budget and the board would have.
But if Jerry Krueger did it the last time on his own, then there's.
We don't know.
On his own.
We don't, we we don't know exactly.
Wasn't just Jerry, it was the board.
Yeah.
That particularly, our friends that.
Yes.
And all.
Yeah.
Yes, I I understand. That's what we're trying to do. That.
But.
Well, it would be the board's decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's where he would then want to be the board to.
Well, Tom Gray actually act acted as a lobbyist. He put up some meeting, no.
So he was the uh.
He was a spokesman.
The spokesman.
It was a public information.
Yeah.
That was his title. He was kind of a lobbyist.
He was a lobbyist.
Well, that's what I was trying to. I'm not in agreement then.
Oh, so you know, we we haven't gone to a vote here.
No, we haven't gone to a vote.
Still discussing.
I guess I guess I would, I think that there should be something said about this, you know, in in a policy that just generally says. How a lobbyist, you know, how how that that works.
Well, I think we need to check the bylaws. I haven't seen anything on bylaws. There's nothing in the law.
She's not saying it's what I.
Matthew, do you know? It's it's his regular picture, so he may not be there.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't I don't know of anything in in the bylaws, but pretty much anything that. That that we spend money on of any significant amount is going to go before the board.
Right.
In some fashion, i- if not through the finance committee, then to the board.
Right.
I do.
But this is a little bit different than just hiring a consultant. This is hiring a lobbyist.
Not necessarily a lobbyist. That was just an example. In fact, this this policy says nothing about lobbyists.
Right.
The other thing, just to to when the board has gotten into. Trying to influence a political process, which is what this is really talking about.
Right.
Uh it does happen occasionally, but it's generally just carried out at the board level. Uh the the case I'm particularly remembering is when we had someone from Oceano on one of their boards. Uh urging us to uh to support a Styrofoam ban. That was uh done by the waste management folks, but which our three conservative. Sir supervisor at the time didn't like and ultimately caused. Them to get to leave the uh waste management. But what was brought to us was to support. This particular ban and we did in fact do that.
Mm hmm.
And it was unanimous.
Yeah, and that would just be a letter from the president.
Yeah, and it was, but it was full on board discussion. The board does not never take action about that kind of discussion. This this policy is more detailed in that it actually, you need to read the whole thing and you will see that they're proposing an entire structure.
Right.
No, I understand. I'm not suggesting, I'm suggesting that maybe we should have a policy about about lobbyists or things that are a little bit. Controversial, you know, uh that's my only point. I I just I don't like to just skip over something and this is D A thought it was important enough to put it in here. Maybe we could just have a one sentence policy that just says. You know, this I these two, these these three items will be taken care of by, you know, by the general manager and the board or I don't know.
The C S D A does lobby. They actually have lobbies.
Right, and that's why this.
Yeah, and that's why it's there.
Yeah, that's right.
You know what? Let me um. If if we don't, if if we don't want to make any decisions, if we have people who have questions still. Uh let me talk to um board president. Um. I can I can do that and say, you know, would it be helpful? To have that um in policy? Yeah. Would it be helpful to have that in policy? I'll talk with Matthew too. And um and then if that's the case, um then I'll need to bring it back any but anyway to take it out of the. Out of our handbook right now. Um I would want to vote for me from all of you before we actually take it out. So um if you look at this list, ten fifty five. It says, it doesn't say anything about that that the board told us to do this.
Okay, um I have a suggestion on we could continue to eliminate this from um a policy that we want to work on. But I would like possibly to reserve um making a policy that would address some of the things like hiring lobbyists and and consultant, you know, like Tom with Tom was. That kind of thing. I I and 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 other things that I trust. So I so maybe a new policy that would address those things uh rather than this policy.
Okay, so I have a really good idea. What we can do is that if this doesn't, this doesn't fit us.
Yeah.
So what I'd like to do is um say. One decision. About this right now, because that's what's on the agenda.
At one point.
Next meeting, I will bring back. Um. The thought of, yeah, the rationale for actually um a very short policy that speaks to. Um legislative advocacy and hiring. Um staff, so I'll bring that back next time. But but for now, this policy. In my mind is doesn't doesn't um.
Fit our situation.
Doesn't fit our.
Well, I I I agree with you, but I I don't think we should totally ignore.
No.
So I appreciate you bringing it back next.
Yeah, we'll bring it back.
I'm adding a motion just so you have it official.
Yes.
Okay, assuming that you agree.
Yeah.
So do not recommend ten fifty five as written.
As written.
And further that this matter will be discussed.
Yeah.
When we really do next meeting?
No.
Okay, at a future meeting?
Yes.
Yep.
Uh is that enough?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Simple enough.
Is that a second still?
Second's good.
Second is A, okay.
And then we have to vote?
Yes, all those in paper?
I agree with that.
Okay.
All right.
Four oh, very good. And I said to not recommend as written, but.
Good.
To table to a future date.
I love it.
Yep.
Okay. Good. Hey, there.
Ten fifty six, which leads us to. Which leads us to.
Okay.
Your policy creation.
This is the one.
This is one. So um I have a question for you, Haley. Um this is this is agenda item four E. And this is review and discussion of C C S D policy ten fifty six, new policy creation. Policy. Um. This policy was approved by the board.
Mm hmm.
On six twenty three, twenty eighteen.
Mm hmm.
So how do we give this? Policy one of these members?
Let's look at the handbook list.
I invented the number one.
And see if we can.
Because I did do one. You know, I couldn't find this spot.
Twenty fifty six, about twenty fifty five.
So there is. Policy ten fifty six, new policy creation policy.
Yeah.
Which we have a policy titled new policy creation. So I think we could just. Ask the board to renumber policy B zero two twenty eighteen that was board approved on August twenty third, twenty eighteen.
Mm hmm.
To be policy ten fifty six.
Mm hmm.
And the C C S D policy handbook.
No, ten, no, because we already have this exact policy. Right here under policy one thousand.
So.
But it's also right here.
I know.
I see, oh.
Thank you.
The adoption and then the policy and new policy creation. It's the same. The words are exactly the same.
Totally identical. I think you could you could say that the twenty nineteen supersets the twenty eighteen and and just do it that way.
Adoption.
Yeah, yeah.
Ask them to.
Yeah.
Eliminate this policy. Because policy one thousand.
It's exactly.
Covers it, yeah.
Well, yeah.
It's exactly.
Don.
And remember this, this is one of the first C C S D policies created.
Yeah, simple as that.
So.
So, yeah.
But that, will you do that?
Yeah, if we've got it covered, then.
Yeah, well, well, yeah, so this could be another item that we take before the board to ask them to just basically.
You know.
Eliminate this one since policy one thousand.
If they if they're good on thousand and thousand covers it, there's no sense having it in there.
Yeah. Well, it's exactly the same.
Well, it's exactly the same words if there's no sense.
And then we can eliminate policy ten fifty six.
Right.
On from our policy handbook.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm totally confused of what you're doing. Um so we have policy B zero two to eighteen. Ten fifty six and one thousand. So we've got three policies?
No.
Nope.
No, well, yeah, but let let me just explain. So we have two policies in our handbook. One of them is a thousand. And one of them is listed on here as ten fifty six.
Okay.
It's not ten fifty six, it's B.
Two.
Two.
Twenty eighteen.
Two twenty eighteen, okay? It's that one.
Um so this one is this uh.
There is that.
Six is twenty is is this one?
Yes, no, no, oh, no, one thousand. And ten fifty six and B two twenty eighteen are all the same.
They're growing, so we're just.
We're just cleaning it up.
We're sweeping out the veterans.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's just one thousand.
Same as one thousand.
Yes.
Okay, but what about the ten fifty six?
It's the same.
The same, so there's three that are the same.
Right, so we're so we're clearing, we're clearing the floor and we're saying it's in one thousand. All the rest of it needs to be deleted.
Yeah.
You've got your bases covered in one thousand. There's no this get rid of B two oh two twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
Get rid of ten fifty six in the handbook. Leave it alone at one.
And we're good.
And we're good.
Yeah.
So we got our bases covered.
It's our responsibility is to clean up.
That's exactly.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
We should be all proud.
Okay.
That's exactly right.
Here's the motion.
Yes.
The motion is to recommend to the board of directors to delete policy B zero two. Dash two twenty eighteen, also known as ten fifty six.
Very good.
Because it duplicates policy one thousand.
Perfect. Do I have a second?
Second.
You and I are really working together.
Doesn't matter. Nobody else wants a second?
I'll second it. Second to.
Okay.
You unanimous, I believe?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Telling you what, we're we're no nonsense outfit.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. That's why we're doing it this way.
And I have been wanting this for.
That was your strategy long time ago.
Yeah.
That was my strategy originally.
We have one that had that strategy.
Yeah.
Okay, old timers, so this next one is gonna be real fun. So this is agenda item four F, this is review and discussion of draft CCSD policy ten forty. Um, dot two. Response to the cor- correspondence to the board.
Right.
Okay, so. At the last meeting, what happened was. Um, we couldn't, we, we couldn't figure out what we wanted to. So I took everybody's suggestions and I put them into this document. And I listed on your, um, board report, on your committee report, the things I did.
Right.
So now. What I would like through, from you all is discussion, questions, thoughts. To tell me what you think of this. Policy, this draft policy. Um, so that if you approve it, then it will go to the board. And we've been doing this one for years.
Oh, amen to that. Amen to that.
So I'm hoping more.
Well, I don't see anything here that, you know, that throws red flags, maybe somebody else does. But I don't personally see anything here that throws red flags at me now. Uh, uh, that doesn't mean that the board won't, so that's, you know.
Yeah.
To it, that's what they, and that's what they do.
Yeah.
And, and because this directly affects. The actions of the board on, you know, on an everyday basis. Um, I, 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 I would hope and I would trust that they would, uh, look at this. Quite carefully to be sure that, um, that it makes sense given the situation that they're in. But I read this through and I thought, well, it's good to, I, I, you know.
So I'm raising this call ten forty point two.
Yeah, I don't know, um, should we? Should we just do ten forty? Yeah.
I don't know where that comes from.
Ten forty, there's a broader thing, this, uh. What about receiving?
So the policy ten forty is correspondence of board and staff, which was board approved on February twenty twenty twenty-two. And then there's a second policy, policy ten forty point two answering.
Yeah.
Or it used to be answering correspondence address to the board of directors, which is your draft title.
Yeah.
And now it's responsible.
Right.
So this is a different policy than ten forty.
Yes, the other one is how you handle it.
Correct.
But where's? Ten forty point two in the handbook?
It's not.
That was my question.
Where is it in the packet?
In you.
In what packet?
In your.
In the agenda packet.
You mean ten forty?
It's the.
That's the last page. Yeah. I think, yeah. Uh, she's included changes, edits in red. Which I think should remain.
Yeah.
Yes, for board, for board consideration, I think it's very important that it remains in red so that the board. Is directed more efficiently to, um. You know, you don't think so, I, I.
I think that receive. So their, their reds are.
Um, let's, let's ask the.
Yeah.
The administrative manager of everything.
Okay, yeah. What do you say to that?
So our policy index has two different policies, policy ten forty and policy ten forty point two.
Hmm.
Um, one is correspondence to the board and staff, and then this one is just response to correspondence to the board.
Right.
So I think it's appropriate to have two different policies, just outlining that this is like a subsection of policy ten forty, but it's point two.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, so that makes sense.
I think that's, I think it makes good.
And it is listed on the policy index that we have.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what is ten forty?
There you go.
It's about, it's about. It's about correspondence. Um, to, to, to the, to the staff.
To the board and staff.
Right, one's incoming and one's outgoing.
No, it doesn't tell them how to respond.
That's correct.
Right.
Let us try and.
This was amended request.
How many years ago, my god? My god, I think I was just the sparkle in my daddy's eye when that, when we wrote that.
Well. It was really easier for me to do this now that I'm a board member.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because I, I didn't get it, yeah, and I know, I know what we do.
Yeah, I think.
So if you wanna look at the screen, I will share my screen. And this is policy number ten forty, correspondence to the board and staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is totally cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, it's really nice to have this.
Isn't it wonderful?
I'm telling you, what would we do without hailing men?
I don't know, you don't even know.
We would fly apart at the seams, I tell you.
Okay, Dawn, go ahead.
I'll start with the, I'll start with the, this is a. Uh. Well, okay, only really ten forty-two point, point, two point, two point one.
Yeah.
Um, s- last sentence, so this is just for clarity.
Yeah.
Instead of saying this allows the board, I would suggest that we say this policy allows the board.
I'm sorry, what, say again, correct?
Okay, ten forty-two, three, one, so halfway down the page.
Oh.
Last sentence of that paragraph. Instead of this allows, or it's, it's just a matter of style.
You said the part in red, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You see where it says this allowed? And so instead, just say this policy allows board.
Yeah, 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 that would be good, yeah, this policy, yeah, allows.
More of a substantial question on, on the. The last sentence before, what is the paragraph? If you go ten forty-two, four, one, I may turn the page at the very top of the page.
Hmm.
Uh, as far as I know, before we've been general manager for resolution. If appropriate, the board president will be blind copy, having been board president.
Hmm.
I think it should always go, I don't think it should be up to the general manager whether.
Okay.
Uh, you know, just again, it's general manager doesn't have the.
Right.
Previous general manager.
Okay.
So what is your change, to, to remove if appropriate?
If appropriate.
Just remove that section, okay?
Oh, and I wanna thank. Claudia for telling me that staff is singular, not.
Okay.
Now, the other one, and this is where I can't quite figure out, is, is. If you read the, this, uh, the various, the second sentence in under purpose.
Yeah.
It such, it provides guidance as to how directors should respond to correspondence they receive as individuals. Or by the board as a whole, there's a grammatical issue right there. I know what you're having, but I can't quite reword it.
How directorship responds to correspondence, they receive as individuals. Or. Oh, yeah, we could do as the board.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, that was the.
Rather than by.
Yeah, it was, there was a preposition, there was by.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Okay, so that's good.
So you're saying as the board instead of speaking for, or?
No.
No, they receive as individuals or as the CCS board as a.
That is a, or they're ten forty-two, four, two?
No, it's under purpose. Right up at the top. Ten forty point two, point one, point one.
With very, very top.
Oh, very top, yeah.
It's a small matter, but I, I, I loved, you know, the changes here, I, I can't see anyone objecting to this. I, I don't think it's obvious at all.
No.
And just provide guidance.
And it's what we do, yeah, and it's what we do.
Yeah, and it's what you do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we may have board members who, who don't. And I think the board, I think the, the board will be fine.
I think that's more than.
Well, then, let's give them the opportunity to.
Many other comments?
Still.
One minute, pardon me.
Yeah.
Well, under general requirements, ten forty point two two. All correspondence shall be acknowledged within two business days.
Right.
And that's, when that says a hole, and then you go down here. Ten forty-two point four, so the individual director. He sees it. Is that still applying two days?
Yeah.
They didn't say that, oh.
Well, it, it's all. All will be acknowledged within.
General requirements, right, yeah.
With two, yeah.
Well, I agree with the all, but I don't know that this. At one time, this was separated.
It's, I know.
Well, that's one.
And I.
Read here.
I mean, the bottom line is if I'm on vacation and I don't have, and I don't look at my, my email. Um, if I haven't received it. I haven't received it. Yeah, that's, I don't check, like, I see you speaking up very much, I do it not on weekend stuff.
But they've all been.
On vacation.
Yes.
So this, one time it was written with the directors.
Vacation.
Didn't absolutely respond to it.
I know.
Oh, that's one. Heard it is all.
You're going, thank you, thank you.
Yes, that's why. Then it all disappeared, I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Make sure that it's not written someplace on the side of the paper.
I would never do that to you.
Cause that's, that's what I was agreeing to, long as I. I can see if everything was wanted to that.
Yeah.
So we have edits?
So the edits.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll read.
Why don't you, why don't you just say as editing?
Is there somebody who's making a motion?
One comment here. What if somebody doesn't respond?
Um, then, well, I'll, I'll ignore it.
I haven't got a response.
Well. No, I took. I took the, the up. Operation, what are those things that I, that will be team? Uh. Norms. Behave, uh, operation, yeah, that would then kick into place and say. You're, you're not doing your job.
You're not following policy.
You're not following policy.
Yeah, so you're, you're.
The only person would know that is the person who wrote the first.
Well, then, we can't do the things.
That's what I'm saying, so they would have to in turn tell who. The same person.
Yeah.
Escalate your general manager.
Or the, or the president.
Or the president, president, yeah, probably the president, the first person. Yeah, that would be, yeah, that would go.
Another line that says.
Can't tell the public what to do in our policy.
Right.
Well, they don't know what to do. I mean, if you don't have, if I, if I go on the website and look at this and, well, gee, what happens if they don't respond? Oh, nothing.
Okay.
Right, that's.
Well, then you do exactly what Claudia did today, and then I said. David.
If she hadn't brought it up.
Yeah.
You wouldn't know about.
No, I wouldn't.
And she would've said, well, I guess they're not interested.
Well, exactly what I thought. But we don't do policies to make the, to, to have the. To have the public do things.
I mean. Except that, you know, it would, it would have been nice if there was a policy that said, well, if, if the new, uh, Carlos doesn't respond. Who do you go to, you know, I mean, you go to the general manager. I, I would feel like a tattletale or something, you know, if I go to the general manager, it's just public service. But, but, but how do, how do people know that? I, I kind of agree with.
That's what I was trying to think.
A little bit, you know, because. You know, I think that this policy is not just for the, the, you know, the people, members of the, of the.
Yeah.
Employees or board members, the chance, it's for the public to be able to read and understand, but. I would have liked to have something that said, well, if so-and-so, you know, whatever, if, if you do not get, receive a response. It's supposed to be two days.
Who are you speaking to here with this policy?
Days.
Are you speaking to the board members? Okay, so if you're speaking to the board members. Then that's, this is, thi- this is the definitive thing, you're speaking to the board members.
Yeah.
Okay.
There is nothing that defines if they don't respond.
That's right. That's up, that would be up to an individual to say, damn, if they didn't respond to me, and, and, and I'm pissed and I'm going to board.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't.
I mean, if I don't get, you know.
Is there any?
Like, I didn't, I didn't get.
So I said, if you don't, if you don't, if you don't get a response.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you. I'll give you a perfect example, I'll give you a perfect example. With this business on, uh, five one one O Nottingham, where the setback was, the college was completely. Blown out of the water, okay? I had, I had to move it up to escalator myself.
Right.
You know, I was not getting the resolutions that I wanted, and so I had to be tenacious enough. To go forward to, to, to bring the matter forward.
Other ideas that they saw you trying, they didn't wanna respond to you.
If, if you don't wanna respond to me.
Then he'll go off.
That's on you, baby.
Yeah.
Cause, cause I ain't.
Well, man, you kept going.
Yeah, and that's, and that is, and that is, that's the responsibility of anybody. If I don't get satisfaction with a customer service complaint from any company, what do I do? I escalate.
Yeah, can I talk to your supervisor?
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I really think we have to look at this policy as to who the hell are we talking to here? And I think we're talking to the board members. I'd say.
I think, I think. If you don't receive a response from a director, you're welcome to go to our website and right here under quick links, it's contact general manager.
Bingo.
And then if there's a subscribe to his, his.
That's fine.
Every letter, so.
Point will take.
Think that, that the citizens of this community don't know what to do in that situation.
Well.
Yeah, that depends.
Okay, so.
Now I know, so I, I don't.
Yes, you do.
Well. If there's anybody more, if there's anybody more tenacious than Christine, I don't know who, now, it would be.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I will.
Okay.
I knew that we, the committee recommends policy ten forty point two. Uh, to the board, if it's considered, with the edits as discussed.
Okay. Have a second?
Second, second, no. Quarter seconds.
Oh.
I'll, I'll read the edits out to you just.
Yeah.
Uh.
Very nice.
Oh, good.
Makes sense that.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, let me read you the edits though, just so we.
Please.
So, first paragraph, ten two, ten forty-two, one, last sentence, change the bond to as. So it reads individuals or as the board as a whole. Uh, and then moving down to ten forty-two, three, one, last sentence. Insert policy of, yeah, where it says this, so it will be this policy allows board members to give general information. And then on the last page, or, and then. At the end here, there, at the last sentence of ten forty. Yeah, ten forty-two, no, ten forty-two, four, one. Uh, is to, uh, delete the words if appropriate.
Yeah. Capitalize T.
Oh, and then.
Thank you.
Oh, T, of course.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Cool, and we did vote, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
We did, it was seen afterwards.
Okay.
I'm just a second. Fourth, second, and second is board, okay.
Okay, so, um, I am remiss in that I did not take, I did not read our written comments under. Um, public, a, a public comment, so I'd like to do that now, that, okay, that's okay.
Sure, this is gonna be showing you see.
Okay.
Yeah, must be, they must be heard.
It says, thank you. Looks like my paragraphs got empty in itself transmission, here's another version with the paragraphs, so it's not a. It's not a big old bob of text, okay? Have a great day, truly, Alida, this is from Alida. Here, here it is. Um. This is regarding resolution fifty-four, two thousand nine, and the community park plan in the parks recreation and open spa- space area. Any further development of the Cambria community parks recreation and open space community park plan should go through a constructive process. Starting with, uh, community-wide survey, further analysis and a formal process to change the plan that was originally approved in two thousand nine. And currently appears on the website. And it, it shows the website.
Hmm.
Um, adding features such as a skate park, disc golf or pool at this point in time will directly violate the resolution fifty-four dash two thousand nine. And approved plan of two thousand, of two oh nine and is ill-advised. Justifications for doing so, such as the people need this, or it's for the kids. Or we have the money, or it's taking too long, are not legitimate legal reasons to violate resolution fifty four two thousand nine. And at and after the approved plan of two thousand nine without due process. The site has been allocated to the community at large. The site has not been allocated to smaller subset groups of people with special interest in getting individual individual projects built. On the site, on the sit, on the site that were not on the approved plan of two thousand nine. Further, these interests appear to be competing. Which is counterproductive and not based at a large community, not based on large community needs. The approach is neither transparent, fair, or not. A cogent approach to integrate these ad hoc post approval projects into the recreational complex. If the plan as presented in resolution fifty four two two thousand nine no longer meets the needs of the community. At large, the plan needs to be formally and officially revised along with resolution fifty four two thousand nine. Changes to resolution fifty four two thousand nine and the plan of two thousand nine should be transparent and done. With at large community input and involvement. Any other approach to getting the recreational complex built is diagram for trouble. And diametric diametrically opposed to the proofs of of a community committee. Or commission, which is to serve the community at large, no more, no less. Regarding timing, the Parthenon and engineering phenomenon was built ten years. In ten years by a group of people who spoke many different languages, each with their own units of measure. Fourteen years in, it is unclear to me why this recreational. Complex remains unbuilt. I would be interested in understanding what the obstacles have been. As I do feel this community would be well served by having these improvements sooner rather than later. It's what the community at large wants. Further, I would be interested in understanding the overall upfront investment for construction. And as well as the project projected running costs required to maintain the entire recreation complex. I would be interested in it in understanding the various funding source. Where will the initial investment funds come from to subsidize the construction of each element? And if those funds fall short, how would more funds be obtained for the complex as a whole? Number two, where will the initial investment funds come from to sub to. Subsidize construction of the infrastructure of the complex? And number three, where will the funds come from to maintain the entire complex? If there are any expectation that Cambria property owners will have to contribute to the complex. Those property owners should have a say in the funding option. If there are any costs or fees for individuals to participate in the features of the complex, that should also be determined and conveyed. An unfinished construction site or or derelict, unmaintained recreation area will be a blight on the community. These scenarios typically arise from underfunding. These scenarios should be aggressively avoided. First things first. Fourteen years have passed since resolution fifty four two thousand nine and the original plan were approved. The questions I have today are in these elements, still what the community wants? Are these additional features the community at large would want such as a skate park, disco, or a pool? That were not on the original plan in resolution, resolution fifty four two thousand nine. As a as a stakeholder and constituent of this community and a person who has actively participated. In community service endeavor endeavors for many years, many decades. These are the questions I would want to be able to ask, answer and convey to the community at large. With answers to those questions, adjustments to the original program and design of the plan two thousand nine can be reconsidered. Revisions can then be presented to the community at large and a formal approval process can be concluded. The bottom line goal for the recreation complex should be to find out what the. Community at large members want today and make it happen as quickly as possible, to the extent investment capital and running costs. Funding can be made available. This process shouldn't be over a decade because. Because of the Parthenon. I appreciate this lady's great. I appreciate your consideration and for taking the time to read my comments. I thank you all for your education, for your dedication, commitment, passion and hard work.
Who's it, who's it from?
Alida.
Alida what?
Pierce. P E A R C.
There's a lot of good stuff in there, a lot of good questions.
Oh, yeah.
Answered and all of that Longswood pros.
But I have to say that I've been on the committee, the East Branch Committee.
Yeah.
And. You know, this is, committee has been discussing these things. There's money that's come forward to pay for things. Um, they have done extensive surveys to see what the public wants. And then they're gonna make a suggestion to the pros committee or committee now, not a commission.
Yeah.
And then the pros committee is gonna make a suggestion to the C C S D board. So. You know, this is just, there's a group of people who've been discussing something that could be done, that's, you know, whatever, and these were the things that seemed to be the most popular. But this woman is coming forward like we've already made this decision, or we didn't make a decision. I think she's ill informed.
Well, I think it's important to just take her at her word.
Yeah.
And to, you know, and to say, thank you very much. Um you already read this at the board meeting, right? Yeah, so I I thought I, and. It's very. So um I, you know.
Sent to the policy committee, is that what?
No, was sent, it was sent to all committees and the board.
No, it's appropriate. But again, I the the per view.
So who who answered that letter?
Yeah.
To this, to Alida.
It's um it's it it's, it was to read at all the committees and to the.
But she didn't ask for an answer? Or a comment or?
I just commented that I received the public comment. I read it at the meeting and that's all I do.
Right.
Yeah, it's a public comment.
But she didn't ask for.
She just wants to make her opinion known, which is all right.
Do you, do we attach the comments to the to the official?
No, they're attached on the website. Yeah, so all you have to do is write public comment. Yeah, here's, she also calls herself a leader, so. So um and then just a written comment written to the record.
Yes. Is it wrong for somebody to answer this woman to say, you know, please come to the meetings and you can find out what's going on? I mean. Is that for her to figure it out?
If you're so moved, you respond.
I don't have.
You're a member of the committee?
Yeah, I mean.
You respond as an individual.
I I would, I would invite her if I knew I was gonna get in contact with her.
You want me to give you our contact information?
I mean, why not?
Oh, it is, it's from, it's redacted.
Oh, I can send you to.
Yeah.
Woman who's running the committee would be, you know, that ad hoc committee would be happy to have her come and hear about what's going on.
But I I will say. She may or may not be looking at the bulletin boards, but the bulletin boards are screaming for people to come to these meetings. On, you know, if not on a weekly basis, on a daily.
Yeah, and neighbor and and.
Next door, probably also on, now I I I deep sixed my Facebook account, so I didn't, you know, I.
Oh.
No way I'm gonna participate in that.
You're welcome.
So um we're on future agenda items and we have legislative advocacy policy. Um we have the manager. Um. The overview.
There was another.
You know what, um? The other thing is, we should look at the, at the, at the um. Position description, which is what you had, right? Position, and then um his um employment. Um contract is public too.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, we'll have that.
So the position description is an exhibit A to the employment agreement.
Oh. So we do the employment agreement.
There it is.
And then I'll also put this policy um as um in the packet.
Yeah.
Okay.
You were very efficient. I appreciate that.
Oh, thanks. Okay. So, um are we? Are we ready to go on to the, to the two thousands or?
If you postponed and then we get going.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Let's.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I suppose we are. One down.
Okay, so.
Nine to go.
Yeah, so let's look at what's under two thousand.
Yes.
Administration.
Love it.
And and what I would look at is I would look at um. The ones that have been um referred to our committee. So that's. So the purchasing committee, they twenty one thirty, oh no, that's approved already. The purchasing committee, um the purchasing policy, let's do twenty one thirty five.
Twenty one thirty five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And. Records retention. We we don't need to.
Uh no, because we just hired a consultant.
Well, it wasn't.
Well, it didn't get, oh, it was discussed but not approved.
Right. Yeah. And then. Reserve policy was really clear to the finance committee. And the grant's policy was approved.
We got policy twenty one ten to twenty one twenty five. Which Dawn, I recall, was going to put something together to make sense of it.
Oh, yeah, but actually, when we do the purchasing, it actually converts a lot of these.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll see when I send you that.
Oh, this is good. Right, so we. So it's really just twenty one thirty five, right?
That's okay. So we'll we'll look at twenty one thirty five and then unless I'm mistaken, we have two thing, we have one.
Put all those in that one.
And and then the next one that has red after it. Oh, um is the social media uh use, and we've looked at that. So then we're gonna go, we're gonna be at at three thousand next time we get together.
Wow, so what's thirty one forty one and thirty one forty two?
No, we're just gonna look at twenty one thirty five.
Yeah.
And then while you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then while we um have continued from today.
Yeah, and and that's the um, was it a confused number?
Well, I'm gonna adjourn.
And yeah, it's right. You guys already have your copy of the needs assessment of the twenty one thirty, the purchasing. You need to review that.
Okay.
And we have that in this, um these packets.
Oh, you can see in the packet from about.
You might just send it to me.
I'll I'll send it to her when you read.
Yeah.
Oh, you've seen it before, but it's been, you know.
Four fifty nine.
Make a motion. Make a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.